Okay, if you will stand and join with me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer? Father, we come to you today just again thanking you for the blessings that we have because we know you as our Lord and Savior. We thank you for this meeting, we thank you for those that are here, we thank you for our council people and for the time and the efforts they put in. We just ask your blessing upon this meeting and we thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is called to order. I have no community announcements or recognitions. Council on the Consent Agenda for Items A, I need a motion and a second for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us a vote. And it's unanimous, thank you very much. Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is adjourned. City Council Meeting is called to order. Council on the Consent Agenda Items A through I, I need a motion and a second for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us a vote. And it's unanimous, thank you. Number three, consider approval of the purchase of two Ford utility vehicles, police interceptors equipped with light bars and sirens with controllers and computer stands. Two 2015 Chevy three-quarter ton trucks with crew cab, one 2015 Chevy Silverado one-ton truck, regular cab and chassis purchased using the State of Oklahoma Central Purchasing Division statewide contract, approval of resolution number 2015-02 to finance the lease purchase with Farmers and Merchant Bank at an interest rate of 1.95% for five years and the amount of $129,239 with a non-appropriation clause as required by Oklahoma state statutes and allow the city manager to execute all agreements related to this purchase. Any discussion on anything? Council for approval for a vote, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us a vote. And it's unanimous for number three. Number four, public hearing and consideration of approval of ordinance number 3267 for the consensual annexation of property located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 10, Township 16 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian Logan County, Oklahoma into the city of Guthrie, Oklahoma, city limits and declaring an emergency.
So you need two motions on that, right?
Yes. Yeah, we'll do two on them, one's to do it and one will be for the emergency. So for, does anybody have any questions on what piece of property this is?
This is Love's, right?
Yes.
A part of it, a new part of it, yeah.
A part of it, okay.
All right, for the first part, I need a motion and a second for the annexation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the annexation, council cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us a vote. And it's unanimous to annex. Council, I need a motion and a second for a vote to declare an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us a vote. Thank you, council. Number five, discussion and possible action ordinance number 3264, amending ordinance number 2422, setting the requirements for land use.
This was workshopped previously and this is an effort to just establish, it's not to establish a specific location, but just to establish the ability for the council in the future to establish an entrepreneurial zone as discussed before. Staff recommends approving this ordinance to establish a classification of a zoning for commercial entrepreneurial.
And this is just to establish a new classification?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us a vote. And it's unanimous. Number six, discussion and possible action on supporting ATV all-terrain vehicle instruction to be held near the rodeo arena located near Mineral Wells Park.
Mayor, I believe there may be some questions for council. I know Mike Clum is here from OSU, is that correct, from OSU? And Tom are here. If council so entertains and would like to ask questions, I apologize as a staff member that I don't know a whole lot of these details and I'd love to be able to answer them, but I may be wrong. If y'all would want to entertain for Mike or Tom to come forward, we can ask questions. Okay.
Please do.
Yep, I agree.
Thank y'all.
How about a little bit of an overview of what the intent is and the use of the property, et cetera?
Okay, just a quick overview, I guess, back in 2011, when I retired from the University of Arkansas, I moved back to Oklahoma, I'd been asked by OU Tri模One Medical Center and also the Churn Center Hospital in Bethany if we could develop a statewide coalition to address ATV safety education in the state of Oklahoma. Well, I was on the fact that the University of Arkansas, we had a major program there at our educational conference facility on the edge of Little Rock. We actually built two rider course sites, of course, we were a multi-million dollar conference facility too, but we actually did training statewide and regionally on ATV safety. And so in the process, when I moved back in January of 2011, we formed a coalition composed of key entities was OU, Tri模One Medical, Injury Prevention, also the Churn Center Hospital, State Department of Health. Since then, we've had other organizations come on board with us too, Safe Kids Coalition, other hospitals, of course Farm Bureau, American Farmers Union, Farmers, I guess American Farmers and Ranchers Insurance, other organizations too. Long story short, we've developed a strong coalition that's addressing ATV safety and have been since 2011. We've been in 27 counties in the state and are expanding our base statewide too. This location would be a central focal point, basically centrally in Oklahoma to allow us to train here and do Train the Trainer trainings for educators and volunteers to come into this area, into central Oklahoma, be trained, go out to other parts of the state to deliver the ATV safety program. We're currently working with grade schools, middle schools and high schools in this with different faculty there. Also, other agencies have been involved too, getting some of their people trained. The training program we do is called the ATV Safety Institute's Rider Course Program and that is a four to five hour hands-on program, 16 lessons. It targets ages six and up, but we're targeting 10 and up in our program, 10-year-olds and up. We have, currently have five educational trailers. They're currently being stored, some at the Fairgrounds facility here in Logan County, here in Guthrie, some are stored over at Crescent at a friend of mine's house there. I've got one stored at my house right now currently. We're looking for a central location to store machines, store trailers, and then have two rider course sites. And a rider course site is a specific range area where you do the actual hands-on riding on that site. One of the lessons in the 16 lessons is actually doing a trail ride too. And so we do trail rides too at the end. When the rider course is being taught, it's taught by that certified licensed instructor and only eight students at a time are taught per instructor, very controlled environment when they're taught. Also too, anytime we're teaching, whether it be at a fairgrounds facility, a school land, where it may be private land, we carry a $20 million liability policy and that's $2 million each occurrence. We also carry $10,000 of secondary health medical for that purpose and that's provided to us by the ATV Safety Institute. It has to be our ATV Safety Rider Course Program. What we proposed with here in Guthrie, just like we have in the past, we have actually did trainings at the fairgrounds and have actually used your property that we were looking at building on for the rider course classes down there. And so when we've been teaching those, it's been by a certified instructor and this summer we had 16 students back in July that were trained. One of our instructors that works for the State Department of Health is licensed to teach and she taught two of our classes down there this summer. And so we've been using the facility there for our programs. We're trying to find a central location that allows to do trainings, store our machinery, things like that, our equipment and then provide that opportunity to train other people across the state and also region. Currently I have two people from the University of Florida need to be trained, I have one from Mississippi State University, two from Texas A&amp;M. And right now, we may still do that training here in Oklahoma, but we play things like that. So I do regional training, national training and on that purpose. And so just trying to find a place in Oklahoma. We, of course, have a great relationship being we are OSU and the OSU Extension Office is housed there too. Great opportunity to work with them and of course we're currently work with them at this time too with some of that. So, Tom, any other comments on that or do you think of?
I had a really good speech worked up, but you took it.
I know. And I talk too much, so just shut me off, okay?
All right. Council, questions for the two of them, anything you don't understand, anything you need clarification on? Again, they're going to build this building on the west end of the rodeo grounds inside that loop inside there because it's all weeds and stuff right now, there's nothing down there is my understanding. The trails will be inside the fenced area of the rodeo grounds and then there will be some behind the barn area back over there.
On the fairgrounds.
On the fairgrounds itself. So, any questions from anybody, any other?
Our plans are maintain those trails initially in our proposal that we have, the grant proposal that we submitted to the State Department of Tourism and Recreation last week, calls for us to come in and eventually chat all those trails so they'll be walkable, so it'll be a multi-use trail. So health, fitness, walking, could be mountain bike, could be equine if they wanted to have horses ride those too. Now, the only time they would ride those trails in ATVs is under the instruction of the instructor for that lesson number 14. The rest of the time, it would not be open to the public for motorized vehicle use on those trails. They're there for training purposes only.
I've got a couple I want to add.
Okay, yes.
Noise pollution, that's the first thing because I already hear it, I mean, I can hear it, people already, "That's noisy." And I've got a full wheel or two, I know what they make.
You know, I've not ran into that problem in the sites where we've trained before, yes there is noise from an ATV. I think the decimal level is low because they're not, they are, they are what I call, I guess they're standard ATV, either utility or a little sport ATV, the 90cc machine, and so they're not going to have the muffler systems that are put on some ATVs that some people do put on their machines out there.
No motorcycles, right?
No motorcycles or dirt bikes, no.
That makes my day. One other thing.
And also when they're doing the trainings, they're very controlled in their riding. They don't get up to 50, 60 miles an hour, it's very controlled. They barely get up to 10 or 20.
Well, maybe 10 to 12 miles an hour, really, it's very controlled.
Not going to jump the whoops and go on.
No. It's a safety program, all four tires stay on the ground, that's what we teach, so.
Now, the other thing I have, and I know I'm taking everybody's time up, we're going to be building this down in there, right? Will the city of Guthrie have anything to do this besides just, you know, are we going to put money into this?
Once the building is built, OSU would build, OSU, the 4-H Foundation, if they receive the grant, would build the building. Once it's built, it will be turned over to either the city, whoever the landowner is. So.
Okay, now I've got another ignorant question, this will be great, I know, I'm sorry guys, if it's down where I think it's going to be at, are you going to build it up out of the floodplain? And I know everybody's going, "Well, I haven't any flood." We will get another flood like we had in 95.
100-year flood, 500-year flood, yeah.
Bad. It was deeper.
And we would have our engineers look at that and we'd have to raise the billing up to where it would not flood.
What else here?
It shows a 25-year lease, is the idea that you're, this is a city, we don't want to incur more maintenance tomorrow morning, so is it after a 25-year, after a 25?
Hopefully we would extend that lease. Now, we have, for the grant purposes, we have to have a 25-year lease with that, with that public agency that we're working with, whether it be city or county.
I know you stated you had $20 million basically insurance binder, is that naming the city as an additional insured to that binder?
No, that's, well, that's, you're covered under that and I can provide you with the full policy from the ATV Safety Institute. If you need a copy of that, we can do that.
Well, I think it's something that we'll have to convey with our, with our OML to make sure that we're meeting whatever requirement they're going to have.
I know with the, with, I know even in our facility there at the University of Arkansas, our insurance carrier we did have was Farm Bureau and we had a, you know, we have like a $30 million facility. We came in, we're going to do this, we changed carriers, our insurance company told us at that time that they would not allow any type of motorized vehicles, dirt bikes, ATVs, and so we provided them with that, that policy from the ATV Safety Institute and they had no problem then. They basically said, "This will cover everything we need to cover as far as liability for us in this program." So, of course, we had to only teach the rider course program and that's what we're here to do, we're not coming out there free riding too.
Kind of a timeframe during the course of the day?
It would be, what would happen there would be during the week, if it's during the summertime, there may be some classes going on there too. For example, I'll be at Hugo here the second weekend in February doing a training to train eight instructors, it's a five-day training. We're using their fairgrounds facility there, they have a, actually they have an enclosed or, yeah, a covered arena, so we're going to be down there doing a five-day training. So, that'll be, those kind of trains take place. For example, if I know I'm working with the high school or two and some of the students there, we've gone through and had 200 students there in December go through our classroom curriculum, we're planning on bringing some of those identified students down to the fairgrounds, actually letting them go through the rider course too, and that'll be during the week.
Okay, well, I guess more than anything is like timing during the course of the day, I mean, if we're running ATVs at 11:30.
Oh, no, 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 it'd be, it'd be eight to five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I've got a question.
Okay.
I'm reading the agenda items, it says discussion and possible actions on supporting. Exactly what motion are we looking for here? What does that mean, supporting?
The document that you'll find located in your packet, Randall's got a copy of mine, it's an actual document that they presented with us and so it's lined out in there, so item number one is that the project will remain accessible for public use for not less than 25 years. The project as described has our approval. If any portion of the project is located in a floodplain, they'd have to deal with that. All federal contract compliance requirements shall be met. So what they're asking for is a letter of support for the grant.
Letter of support.
We would then enter potential agreements further such as the ability for a facility to be built on city property. What does that look like 25 years from now? How does that O&amp;M work in with us? So there'll be future agreements after this.
Yes.
Basically what we're trying to do is, we came across this grant opportunity at a very short time period. Week and a half ago, Mike and I went to visit the Parks and Recreation of the Tourism and they told us about this, we was talking to them about the educational grant to sponsor the position itself to keep the training going across the state. As we were visiting with them, then we found out about this Trails Grant that has the opportunity to build us a large facility so we can have this central location. Within that grant application, if you've ever looked at a federal grant application of any kind, you got to cross every T, dot every I and then triplicate it and all that kind of stuff. The form she is referring to is actually from that grant asking that we have support to go forward with this. Even if we get the letter of support, this part of the support, we'll have a lot of details work out about specifically who's going to do what and where, so at some point in time, who knows? And who knows if we're going to get the grant? We're just doing our best to get out there and get it.
I've got a question. So, I was trying to look through the documents, how much is the grant and how much is the match?
Let me pull it up here for you real fast.
So, our grant is applying for is 453,000 total. That would be 350,000 from the grant and 103,000 that we are coming in to match. Match includes his salary in full, part of my salary is overseeing it from the 4-H Foundation, other in-kind procedures such as what Polaris has given us, 10 ATV units to store out there and some different in-kind matches like that.
Well, I like the idea that we have a kind of a joint use, like a trail run as well as a fat tire guy like myself that likes to, you know. But how does that intermix with what you've done in the past or how do you see that?
Well, I, when we're not out there training, those trails will be available for the fitness program they do at the OSU Extension Office right now, walking trails, equine, mountain bike, for example, those type of things. Also too, we're going to be working with the Master Gardeners here in Logan County to establish 10 different, we call them outdoor, outdoor learning centers with native species, native plants, that type of thing to where that's a training station too that can be utilized. One station will have like a picnic table, for example, that talks about the importance of tread lightly, leave no trace, so here the ATV kids pull up on ATVs, we sit down and have a lesson about, you see how it's trashed out, you always pick up what you, you know, when you go out and ride on state parks, public lands, what you carry in, you carry out, that type of thing too. So there's those kind of training sites, but the native species, working with the Master Gardeners will do that too and provide those kind of teaching things too.
Along the trail system, we will also have signage that's approved by the Forest Street Department. It's the kind of signs they use in all their state parks across the Oklahoma State. Those signs will be talking about the tree identification, plant identification, you know, pedestrian crossing, things like that, so we can help teach the kids this. What we're trying to create is an opportunity to do a change in attitude and a change in behavior. One example I give is, how many of y'all watch rodeo? How many of y'all watched rodeo 25 years ago? Were they wearing helmets?
No.
No. Most, a lot of them on the restock are wearing helmets now. I went skiing a few weeks ago, I started when I was 17. When I first started going skiing, they weren't wearing helmets. Now, half to three-quarters of people are wearing helmets. It takes a while, but it takes a central focus and a central push to really create a change in behavior and attitude and that's what we're trying to create in this opportunity. We're working with 4-H kids, FFA chapters across the state, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, we have a whole conglomerate of schools we've been working with in the different counties and the state fairs. We've presented at the Oklahoma Wildlife Expo. We have huge numbers of people we're trying to get to and talk to about the impact that this program will have. And so we're just trying to figure out the best facility, the best place to be able to make this happen and we feel this is a good opportunity.
How long is this trail?
The trail itself, the trail system itself that we're planning to develop is going to be 2.2 miles long and it'll have some crossing areas. We'll be using the National US Park Service, US Forest Service signs like this, they'll be in the nice, the ones they use nationally actually at the state parks. I've been to some riding centers that Honda has put together, Honda Corporation around the country, will follow those same kind of guidelines too. Statistically, just for your information too, Oklahoma, since 2010, we've had, we've had 96 deaths involving ATVs, so that's about a 20 per year average. We rank right now around 15th in the nation in ATV deaths. 65% of all deaths occur on public roads. ATVs aren't supposed to be on public roads or public highways. Also too, 90% of our injuries occur to young people under age 16 and the primary reason for that is they're of course not wearing the proper gear, but they're riding machines that are too large for them to ride. And so we're trying to educate mom and dad, grandparents, you know, you control the keys, make sure that you don't put that grandchild, that small child on an ATV they can't control. Plus, ATVs are designed for one person only. And of course, I can cite all kinds of stats as far as deaths and injuries here in Oklahoma and around the country too.
You're only looking for support, so if you've got a lot of details to work out, I'd just make a motion that would give you the support you're looking for.
One other thing I might add is, because this is kind of a cross situation where you've got, get fit Logan County, I don't know if you've dealt with them before or not, but I mean, it kind of ties in with their, their function as well, especially on the, on the trail system and.
Okay.
We had a visit with Kathy James there at the Extension Office and she has talked about the fit programs that she has and promotes over there.
And I think that the county health department too is aware of some things we're doing too, Kathy's talked to them already too.
I have one little question.
Yes.
How, how long are the sessions? You said that there would be eight people at a time and there was going to be class instruction and.
A rider course and what we've got set up right now, design-wise on that piece of property, just west of the, of the arena, will have two rider course range sites. There could be two classes going on at the same time if we needed to. And that class takes approximately four to four and a half hours to teach eight students and.
So, so you're anticipating that it will be a central location for the entire state of Oklahoma?
And.
So we're theoretically looking at people coming in to Guthrie, maybe to spend the weekend.
Well, and we could have, we could have young people come in.
Bringing their equipment.
If we do, especially if we do a Train the Trainer program, for example, we're working with two school districts over in Potawatomi County, they would come here, be trained for two days. We've got, already have scheduled for the Northwest District of Oklahoma and the Northeast District, got to think when that one is. It's going to be in August, we won't have some stuff done by then probably, we can probably train them here. We've had one training already at the fairgrounds, similar, we used the educational building and we went out and actually used that site in the grass area and did some training there too. But yes, that would be overnight lodging for people too, for adults and.
Is there enough room there and I'm not, I'd have to go look at it again, to park people's vehicles, their rigs and things like that? I mean, my grandkids ride motocross and I know that they have big trailers.
We provide all the machines, it's our machines.
So they don't bring their.
They don't bring their own machines, we provide the machine. Now, they can't, they want to, but the way we design the program is, we provide those units for them based on their age and size. And so we have to meet those guidelines as far as age requirements on that machine by the manufacturer and then size them too to make sure they're riding the right size machine.
We're really not looking for space to store.
No, no, no. We have 40, we have 45 machines in our program right now and they're stored on the trailers currently, some are stored right now in one of the buildings there at the fairgrounds. And so no, it's a place for us to have a central location to store things, check things out to other parts of the state that come back in and provide that security too.
One last silly question, when do you, when do you think you're going to be awarded or when do you think it'll, they'll?
So, as they were turning this in, we were told that we have most of February to make sure we have all of our documents in order and then it'll probably be sometime middle March or April before the board meets to look at all the applications that are turned in for this specific grant. After that, the money would be awarded, she thought, no earlier than June, but more likely later in the summer, early fall. We have a two-year opportunity to finish this project and get it going.
So you think in July or August?
At the earliest, probably July.
At the earliest.
Second?
No, no, I'm not done.
What you can do is discuss.
I got a couple more questions I want to add. I'm sorry, you guys.
We've got a motion and a second, you can discuss now.
Remember, this is, this is a motion to just move forward on it.
I do want to say one thing too, the ATV Safety Institute does charge a fee for our rider course programs because of our relationship with Oklahoma State University, the land grant system and ASI, all those fees are waived. So a six-year-old to a 15-year-old, the fee would be $55, those fees are waived per child. For 60 and up, it's $150 per person, those fees are waived. We provide this at no cost to the, to the citizens of Oklahoma, basically, through Oklahoma State University.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
What does the county commissioner say?
They said yes.
They voted yes. Well, all three of them or just two out of the?
We had one abstain, I believe.
Two, yes, one abstain.
I know.
Marvin abstain, Marvin abstain.
Marvin abstain, I had a nice chat with him, that's the reason why I'm asking. Does Oklahoma State, you guys like this too? Will this be all right for you all? Okay, so I just want to make sure before I vote on something, you know, I don't want to.
We have talked with the.
Aggies all through and through.
With the vice president for agriculture who's over extension, the lawyers at OSU are aware of what's going on too, they've looked at everything we've talked about too with them and Tom could probably address that more than I can.
They will help us actually when we're working on our MOEs or MOAs, that they would help us make sure we have the correct terminology and the correct documents and everything like that. So everybody's on the same page and has the same understanding of what's going to happen.
And we're not agreeing to anything, we're just.
We're just moving forward.
I just want to make sure. It's a letter of support to proceed with the grant and that we will work out the details of where we're going to do it.
All right, council, I have a motion and a second to call for, who's going to paper, if you get the grant, who's going to paper this thing up? Because this is, this is something somebody's going to be looking at 25 years from now, figuring out what are we doing, what were we doing?
I'll say that again.
Who's going to, you need an agreement with the city, obviously, if you get the grant. Normally I'd say you ought to have that as part of your grant application.
Well, and that's what that piece of paper is.
No.
No, no, you're talking about, down the road?
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
This just says we're okay with the concept. And I really have some problem with the language of this, but if you have to have this form, that's probably okay, but is this one that the government gave?
That's the one that the state gave us, yes. That's the one that the state gave us, yes.
The state gave, because, because the city, if they do the deal, will give you a 25-year lease, but I kind of have a problem with somebody representing to the government right now that we're going to give you a 25-year lease, and we don't know what it's going to look like with all the terms. So, I don't want to throw.
As far as the, the lease arrangement or the?
Well, the lease arrangement, the building of the, the improvements, who's going to maintain them, who's going to own them.
Okay. And we can provide you with the document that shows the elevations of the building that we've had put together, those type of things too, and the floor plans and that, all that too, if you need, need a copy.
That all needs to be in an agreement with the city, so that when we give you the use of this ground for 25 years, we know what it's going to look like two years from now. And that's the reason I ask what we're voting on tonight.
Yeah.
And who's going to paper this thing up properly? Because it's, it's a little more complicated than a single piece of paper.
And one thing too, when we're not using that facility for one of our trainings, the OSU Extension Office would have access to the, to the conference facility part of that. They could be leasing that out too, to other people here in the community to use for their meetings too. And that has to be established as far as what rate would, that would be to generate income too, and some revenue that way too. So.
Those are things that need to be in the overall agreement between whomever in the city. And then there's a deal in here that says all, all federal contract compliance requirements shall be met, and the city's making that representation. But as I understand it, we're not contracting to do anything except lease you the land. So, I don't, again.
The way Susan from Oklahoma Tourism explained that to us was, we need to follow like the ADA requirements for disabilities or rebuilding the building and trails, and make sure we follow all federal guidelines to build.
No, I agree, but that's your responsibility, not the city's responsibility. And this is saying the city will assure all that. Which, and then the, the issue of flood hazard, we're not going to allow building to be built in the 100-year floodplain. If it's out of the floodplain, then you can get flood insurance, but that's a whole nother issue. That's why this form, as it is, presents some problems to me. But as long as everybody understands, this is just supporting your con, the concept of doing this, and you understand the city's, and you've got to come to an agreement to paper this thing up properly, then you can go on with your grant, I think.
That's what my.
But we're a long way.
I think she actually said that.
That was my point, is we've got a lot of details to work out here. We're just saying, let's move ahead and do that. That's what.
And that's, I seconded that.
And if we were just doing a letter on the mayor's letterhead that said, "We support this concept and this project," that'd be a whole lot easier than making representations that are made in here that we really may or may not.
We may, if it says we're going to do it, we'll, we'll put it in the contract that they do it. That's how we'll do it.
No, I agree.
Sir, one thing we might be able to do, and I'd have to check with Susan at the department, we might be able to do what you said, get a letter of on the mayor's headings and everything like that, and find out if this can be signed and submitted later, so we have some more of the details worked out. I'd be glad to call them and find them, find that out tomorrow.
Well, I just, I just didn't want.
That's what you're saying, 100%.
I just didn't want everybody to think we've got an agreement tonight, because we're a long way.
Right. Now, we understand that, and we're the two players that are trying to get this put through as far as a facility.
My motion was not for an agreement.
Your motion, the motion made was to move forward and continue looking at this, and the second was made to go ahead and continue looking at it. And any other discussion? Counsel, I have a motion and a second to continue this and go looking at it. I need a vote. Counsel, cast your vote.
For a letter of support or something?
Yeah, is that for a letter?
Or a letter of support.
For a letter of support.
Letter of support.
Show us the vote. And it is unanimous to show them that we like them, sort of, kind of. However.
If you all would like to have a copy, I do have plenty of copies of this, if you each would like to have one of these.
Wouldn't like that.
I'll go get you some copies.
You'll leave them for us. Thank you. All right. Number seven, city managers report.
Want to reminder that city offices are closed on February 16th in honor of President's Day. We've also gotten some phone calls. If you notice, the work that is going on with ODOT, you'll see some city employees out there as well. They are not working on this specific ODOT project. What we recognized was that it was a great cost savings to allow ODOT to tear up the road, and while they're tearing up the road, we go ahead and replace those sewer lines through the C-MOM project, so it just costs less money. So, no, we are not doing the, the ODOT work for them. And as I'm thinking of that east side and visiting businesses over there, I want to remind everyone that those businesses are still open, and they could really use some support with that kind of construction going on. A reminder for this Saturday is that Taste and Tail is at the fairgrounds from 12 to 2:30. And the Citizens Academy is proceeding on with a spring-ish, it will start probably in March, a spring academy for 2015. The applications are on the city website to apply for that, so be sure to tell friends and family that we'd be happy to have them in the Citizens Academy. I want to also thank council member Riendo for joining us this morning with 16 police applicants performing their agility test, and it was pretty amazing. The individuals that want to be police officers here all passed 100% that agility test, and we've actually never seen 100% passing of our agility test. It's actually excruciating, and it's a, it's a very, very strenuous agility test. It's pretty amazing, so thanks for that support. That is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Number eight, request comments from members of city council. Z Thomas, we'll start with you. Nothing?
Not everything, and let someone else have my time.
Clarice?
All right. The World Series of Team Roping is coming to the La-Z-ee on February 14th and 15th.
That's it?
That's not enough?
John Wood. More than you.
I would say that, you know, the city council is, we're looking for folks to run for city council. I know Ward 1 is actually open, wide open, so if anybody wants to run for the Ward 1, you know, hey, it, it's open. You might be a city councilman before you know it. So, we are looking for quality people, so.
That's it?